It is painful.
All right, it's seven o'clock. The corps is present. We'll call the meeting to order. We've got an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes?
No changes, but just a correction on the consent agenda. I believe that in your packet where you have the narratives, Brenley Stern is misspelled. It should be B-R-E-N-L-E-Y under new contracts. And then just for reference, I've handed out in front of each of you updated extra duty sheets, as well as coaching assignments, because we've already had some additions since the packet was published. So that is the most accurate listing of coaches and extra duty assignments. But other than that, no other things.
All right, are there any questions for the consent agenda items? Have you received a motion to approve?
So.
In a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Administrative reports, Marty?
All right. You've got the numbers from May. Closed out a great school year. We were able to give our seniors all the festivities that they missed out on in 2020, so felt really good about a busy May. Summer school's rolling. Students making up credits, lost from attendance or failing grades. Last year, we have a record number of students in the high school that are taking summer school, and most of that is attributed to distance learning and the amount of students we had fail distance learning, and now they're behind. So summer school's giving them a chance to get caught up a little bit, and we've got a lot of students taking advantage of that, so that's a good thing. We've started our second session of summer school today. Driver's Ed students are out about, and Mrs. Parker's done a great job of teaching driver's ed. I don't know where she finds that in her heart, but she does a really good job with that, so we appreciate that. We pray for them every time they go out on the road. We have nine students that started health today. We're moving health back to the freshman year, so we're offering it in the summer to sophomores if they want to go ahead and get that semester of health done, and that will lower our health numbers a little bit, since we're going to basically do it for freshmen and sophomores next year. So we have nine students taking health. Nineteen students that have started the second session working on credit recovery today, and that's a little bit down. We have about thirty in the first two weeks. Maintenance staff's working hard, getting everything ready for August. Don's waxing everything in sight. We've got a little path that we can walk on, and Andrew and Vassili are always walking around doing whatever Andrew and Vassili do. It's always a good project. We don't always know what it is, and that's okay. They did redo our whole camera system, and I won't get into the details, but it took us a long time to find video when we needed a video, and now you can just pull it up, and it's all right there, and you can type in exactly when and where you want to see it up at pop. So those guys, if they don't have anything to do, they just find something to make our lives easier. Like that was a really cool thing that probably took them a few hours to do, but made a big impact on what we do. We're excited for August. We've got sports going on all over the place in June. If you have kids and sports, you know how that goes in June. We're actually between softball games right now, so after my report, if you don't mind, I'm going to slip out and go supervise a softball game.
Any questions, Marty?
Thank you. See you later. Thanks, guys.
And you pretty much, there's nothing else. I'm going to do a summer school update here in a few minutes.
Okay.
I think you pretty much did.
Yeah, we're rolling in summer school. Happy football.
Perfect. Take care. Dr. Spencer?
Okay, well, you've got all my numbers too. I feel like we had a strong end to our year. The kids seemed to end on a really positive end this year. We had lots of good field trips, and we held our social till the very end of school, and we liked that so much, we think we might do it again next year. It was just a really good experience to have it outside, and they had a really good time. We have a ton of kids at summer school. Numbers were down today. It's fifth and sixth grade camp at Rock Garden this week, so our fifth and sixth grade numbers dropped off, and I dropped Trenton off there yesterday and heard, "Dr. Spencer, Dr. Spencer," so that's where they all are. Pretty sure of that, but we had strong numbers the first two weeks, and they had a lot of good activities going. Of course, they even came that first week when the pool wasn't open. A lot of them did, so. Lots of sports camps going on. We've got football training in the mornings and weights. We've had volleyball camps. We've had basketball, just baseball on Wednesday. So they kind of come and go throughout the day, but that's good too. We're working with them on that, and it's good to see them all involved in that. We're looking forward to next year, and we're planning professional development. We're really trying to focus in on areas where we can make some improvements. Finding students with some behavior and discipline issues that we feel like we can do a better job being proactive with those, and then looking at academic focus, of course. We're kind of giving math some attention next year and looking at the lower end of that. Where can we get those scores up? We've got some new electives coming into next year. We're adding another STEM course to our project Lead the Way lab, and excited about that, and a couple of new math classes. And our building is a little bit of mess right now, but I really wish you would all come in whenever they kind of get it back in shape again and look at it, and I should have taken before pictures, maybe Josh did, but we're doing a major remodel. Our seventh and eighth grade girls restroom was probably... Matt, do you think it was original to the building, maybe?
Pretty close.
I dragged Mr. Hall in there last year, and I said, "Can you just look at this?" And he said, "I've never been in here before. This is terrible." Yeah, wooden doors with... Not all of them even closed all the way, and none of them had locks on them. It was needing some attention, so we're having a remodel on it. We'll have a couple of fewer stalls, but we'll actually be handicap accessible, and the doors will close and lock. So some good things going on there. And then some of our walls, I don't know if you've been in the middle school in the last few years, but our outer walls, back when, I guess we probably used to have more roof problems than we do now, we still kind of have to keep an eye on that. But the water would get down between that stucco and the brick, and it would loosen it, and then the walls would just have kind of crumbling holes in them. So last summer, Josh and Carl took two of our third floor rooms back down to the brick and just put a sealer on it, and it's beautiful.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
Yeah, and then this year, Carl was putting a new whiteboard in the eighth grade math room, and a big chunk of the stucco just fell off, so we have another part of a wall of exposed brick in there that looks really nice now. And so we're kind of doing that, rather than just covering it with sheet rock and maybe having to deal with problems again. And it looks... You know, our building's vintage anyway, so it just kind of takes it back to that. So you guys have to come see that whenever we get that all done and look at it, because good things happen over there. Oh, and we're getting a new refrigeration unit. That's what that concrete pad is outside of my main door.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Marlene?
End of year totals for sped, and I told you that I would kind of have some figures for you this month. We finished out the year completing one hundred and thirty-seven special ed evaluations, which is a lot. Of those eighty-nine, those are initial evaluations and reevaluations, of those eighty-nine met eligibility for services. Out of initial evaluations, we had forty-five initial evaluations, and thirty of those initials met eligibility. Fifteen did not. We finished the year with two hundred and nine special ed students, which was down from where we started, which needed to happen, and we finished the year with twenty-two students that have five oh four plans. I am a numbers person, and I kind of like to look at cost breakdown on how much it costs to do an evaluation for different areas, and based on the different eligibility areas, if we suspect a student has an intellectual disability and we test that student's, materials cost to evaluate that student is about twenty-five dollars. Time involved in the complete process is about twelve hours for a student with an intellectual disability. For a student that is suspected, specific learning disability, your materials cost is about seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents and about twelve hours of time of evaluation. Other health impairment, materials costs are about thirty-two dollars and seventeen cents and about thirteen hours of time spent. Our young child developmental delay students, materials costs are about eight dollars and fifty-six cents and about seven hours spent on time. Our speech students, materials costs are about five dollars and twenty cents and about ten hours of time. Our language students, about four dollars and thirty-six cents, materials cost and about ten hours to evaluate. In addition, if we're evaluating someone for a related service like occupational therapy or physical therapy, it takes about two hours to do that evaluation, and the cost is seventy-five dollars an hour, so it's about a hundred and seventy-five dollars in addition to those other costs if we have a student that we need to evaluate in one of those areas too. So when we complete one hundred and thirty-seven evaluations in a year, time cost and materials cost, those really are substantial that the district pays out. I know that, my goodness, I can't even remember how many thousands of dollars I spent on testing supplies this year, but we're in probably close to five to six thousand dollars worth of testing material that we've spent this year to evaluate our special ed students.
Any questions about that? Probably took a little time to come up with all those numbers, I'm sure.
I like looking at the numbers at the end, so.
Thank you. Bobby send anything?
Yeah, it's in your packet. He's out of state right now.
All right, you've got a summer school update?
Yes, and in front of you, I've put the numbers for summer school. It's this sheet here. Pull this one up and try to tell where we are with the numbers. This year for summer school, we kind of do a three-year comparison. Currently at the elementary school, we have three hundred and one students enrolled, one hundred and seventy-one at the middle school, and one hundred and ninety-seven at the high school, for a total of six hundred and sixty-nine students. Compared to the prior two years, it's up significantly. Last year, we had four hundred and fifty-one. Of course, you remember that we did last year during July. We had Havien Gallow in June, and so obviously because of COVID and everything else, I think those were primarily the reasons why our numbers weren't as high last year. Two years ago, though, we're still one hundred and twenty... Well, we're about ninety kids, I guess, above where we were two years ago, and significantly higher, as you can see, at the elementary school, which I think stands for reason. I think parents want their kids back in school for the summer, and they want them someplace for the summer, and so I think summer school is a nice option. Summer school is a nice option, so, yeah, I mean, even from two years ago, from two forty-four to three hundred and one, I mean, that's a pretty significant increase. But our high school as well, one hundred and forty-two years ago, we're up to one hundred and ninety-seven students. Now, a lot of those at the high school are distorted, because that also includes kids that go in and do weights two or three hours a day, so they're part-time. They're not full-time. Summer school kids are doing credit recovery, but it's still a significant jump. So our ADA for summer school, as we call it, this year's summer school counts toward next year's budget. Not the one we're going to talk about tonight, but they always go back, like the budget I'm sharing with you tonight, we looked at last year's ADA, and it kind of gave us a grace on that because of COVID and everything else. So basically, they're waiving that and using the prior year. Next year's budget, they'll use this year's number, so that should increase, which would be a good thing. And you can see that the ADA, now the ADA, keep in mind, we have six hundred and sixty-nine students, but we also have some of those students who, they were enrolled, but they haven't actually shown up. So we'll take those kids out of the system after summer school is over, and they'll have them where acting accounting, what are enrolled in our ADA, actually wound up being. But, and as Dr. Spencer said, our numbers this week are down because they're having a church camp, and I think a lot of our kids are going to the church camp, and so that impacts that as well. Then the high school breakdown, you can see what we have for credit recovery in the first half. I've received these numbers from Chris Wagner, so as of that date, we didn't have the second half numbers yet, but you can see how many kids are doing PER, doing athletics and weight training and all that. We have one hundred and twenty in the first half, one hundred and twelve in the second half, so we have quite a few of our high school kids that are going in and a few weights and working out during the day as well. And then fifty-one of our kids are going to be involved in their supervised agriculture experience in the second half. They're involved. I mean, we just had the fair recently, and we had a lot of kids involved with that. We have a lot of our kids in FFA doing their supervised work experiences these last two weeks in the winter, summer too in July for FFA. And so it's kind of funny, because the FFA building seems more busy sometimes during the summer than it does during the year. We just get kids coming and going all the time, so they're pretty active during the summer. Fifteen kids are enrolled in health, and then Ms. Parker's nine or eight driver's ed kids finished the first half, and so I appreciate Marlena stepping up. I can't remember the last time we've actually had a driver's ed instructor. Do you know Dr. Spencer?
We've had one since I've been here. My first couple of years here, we had one this summer.
We haven't since I've been here, so.
Bobby Spencer used to come over and teach it, so.
What do we use as a ring for that?
That we have Bailey Chevrolet has donated a car for us, and they've actually rigged it up to put a brake on the passenger side as well. Marlena's had to use it several times.
They worn that one out once.
Oh, yeah. Sometimes it's just a reaction. But, yeah, I mean, it's really nice that Bailey's kind of stepped up, and they're not charging us for it. You know, in most places I've been, you have to, as I said, you have to rent the car and pay to have the equipment put on it, but they're just... John stepped up, said, "No, we got one for you. We'll rig it up for you, and use it as much as you want." So it was a good thing.
And they have an accident one few years back.
Yeah, I think that was about when the last year's we were allowed to use it. John forgot.
Well, Marlena, thank you for keeping us safe, okay? But no, I think all summer school's going well. The numbers are up, and the first year or the first week, the pool didn't even open, and it's cold anyway. It's probably going to use it. But we're taking advantage of it now, so it's a good thing.
Got a quick question back on high school ADA, and I'm asking this, I think Dean's asked it, and I don't remember if we clarified it or not, on the totals, on, the word says resident and non-resident on high school ADA.
Oh, on the administrative report, I bet you.
Yeah, I should have asked that there. I think Dean's asked this, and I don't remember if we get the answer.
I don't think so. He's asked it and re-asked it and re-asked it. And I appreciate you bringing that back up, Holly.
Well, as far as you are figuring, you have the answer.
No, I don't, and actually, I thought about that today. I said, "Man, I hope they don't ask that again." I still don't have the answer. So I know what you're talking about. You're over on...
The total.
Yeah, on the total where it says it's all total enrollment for every month, and it gets four twenty-seven, and it obviously isn't the same number, because it's not an average of all of them. And so what I need to do, I know this report, I believe, is generated by Amanda, is it not? I think it is. And so what I'd like to have is have this spreadsheet from her, so that I can actually see what that cell says, see what the formula says, because it's not an average. And the other two reports doesn't have that.
You think it's actually Jenny?
It's Jenny.
Oh, is it Jenny that does this one?
Yeah, she makes a talk every month, because sometimes our numbers don't come out.
Yeah, I'll visit with her and find out what exactly that means. But I also think too that this may be generated through SIS.
I don't know how they do that.
I think she may just pull the data from SIS. I will have an answer for you.
I'll get a tattooed on my wrist.
Sometime very soon.
Sounds like the same answer.
You're all going to take turns asking it. Next month is going to be Max's turn.
Next year, we'll go through it again.
I know, and it's like, I'm seven months, so I will, I'll figure it out.
Let me ask a question about this, the one that you gave us here. You know, I noticed the average daily attendance numbers by building seemed to be reasonable until you get into the high school, and then it's wildly different, and I wondered if there was a reason for that?
Yeah, I think up in the note, Chris alluded to it, but I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that so many of those kids are part-time kids, and they're just going up for two or three hours for weights.
So we don't get, I mean, surely we count them as an ADA, right?
Well, we count them for the portion of the day that they're actually there and in attendance, and they may not go every day.
Oh, I see, so.
So if they're, you know, if they're...
If they're there for two hours out of...
Then we get two out of seven.
I got you. Okay, makes sense.
Any other questions on summer school? All right, did you guys go tour DRS?
Yes, we did, and I'll ask, you know, we have to jump in there as well, and Tina also, but we did. Went to DR, or DRS, I think it's DRS, last week at West Plains. I went to their main building, their headquarters, brand new building. I mean, they just got it finished, and I think it started being an issue back when the flood hit in seventeen, and then they were delayed by COVID, and so they finally have it finished. But we went there because they have a variable refrigerant flow system that we wanted to see, and that's pretty much where the committee is leaning toward right now, I believe, and I won't speak for Matt or Dr. Spencer, but that seems to be the most efficient. That seems to be the one that most meter needs. Tony, you were kind of involved in that conversation when we had our first committee meeting, so I really think that that's the direction that they're leaning right now. When we went to DRS, we had a gentleman from Integrity there, John, not Ryan, but the other gentleman who was here last time, who was there. We also had a representative from Menex, and we also had a contractor. Who's the contractor?
Rodney from Wood Mechanics.
Right, and he's the one that actually put it in over at DRS and walked us through the building. We were able to see, you know, all the different, they call them cassettes, that actually are mounted on the ceiling. They had, the first room we went into is a conference room, had a pretty good size, three-by-three cassette, which is probably larger than what we'll have, but we may have two of them that are like two-by-two or something like that in each classroom, but they were pretty quiet. I mean, if you kind of put it into a classroom environment, it sure didn't seem to be very distracting at all, I didn't think. And the controls are very, very good. A lot of the controls are online, and you can see in every location exactly what the temperature is at any given time and what the thermostat's set on, and whether it's working to efficiency, and whether you have an error. If you have an error, then it'll shoot you a message, and then our tech guy can take care of it. Or it may be, one of the things they mentioned with that is that, you know, with Mike Bailey doing all of the work that we have right now, it's going to require somebody to get trained on providing the maintenance and support for that type of a system, and a lot of that may be beyond what Mike has done, and so we may have to get him some training to be able to do that. So where we are right now, I said, it was a good visit. I think it kind of convinced us that that's the direction we probably need to go. They're still working on the design development phase. Hopeful that we can have something come to the board maybe by September as far as actual cost. They're going to do a construction management model, whereas Integrity would be the construction manager, and they would actually oversee the project, and they would hire all the subs. The advantage to that is the construction management, they will give us a guaranteed maximum price. They will say, "Okay, we can put this in. Here's the specs. Here's the guaranteed maximum price." There's not going to be any energy performance. It's not going to be like if we don't save enough money, they're going to pay you back the difference. It's just going to be, they're going to tell us this is what the amount is. The advantage of that is that we don't have to deal directly with all the subs. They'll handle all that, and they'll take care of that, so it's a really effective model to do the more complicated that you have, and this is the type, we had talked about in our committee, that maybe starting something in November and doing it over the winter months, because there are some things that they can do inside, and they can do it in such a way that does not disrupt the building. The problem that we have is phasing. I mean, Dr. Spencer would have to be able to move a group of kids from this location to another location. The problem is that we don't have another location to put them, and so we would have to kind of work through that, but there's a lot of stuff they might be able to do outside as well, and it would work well from an S or three standpoint, because by the time that money comes in, we just do, they can just do a monthly billing for us. We can pay that and then request reimbursement from the S or three money, so it's just going to be paid for through S or three. And since they're going to be handling all the procurement bids and the prevailing wage and all that, then they can deal with that. They do it all the time. So that's kind of just a brief update. I don't know, Matt and Tina, did you have anything that you wanted to share about where we're headed right now, or?
No, it looked like, you know, as far as, when we started discussing this, I just had this horrible vision of really tearing into my building, because there's nothing there that's easy when you go to working on it, but this looks like a really minimally invasive system, and I like the fact that, I'm always thinking down the road, you know, what the system we have is, what, twenty, twenty-five years old? I'm thinking twenty, twenty-five years down the road, this looks like a system that if you change to something else, wouldn't be a total tear out. Josh and I had talked, and one of the bigger projects as far as our end is going to be getting those old, that old system out of there, those old units, those things. There's no telling what the walls and the floors look like behind and under them, or what it's going to look like when you take them out, and they're piped in there, so, you know, I think it's a good option as far as not really invading the building and having to tear things apart to get what we need done. And it looks like a really good clean air system.
For you all that weren't in the meeting room, when we looked at the different systems, the way this system works is there's a few outside systems, depends on how many rooms and how many... But I think you could run eight different rooms or eight. It's kind of like a mini-split, if you've ever been involved with those. You've got two lines that go to this cassette deal that goes in the roof or in the ceiling, and they just run out to the system, and that's basic all. There's no duct work. That's why it's so minimally invasive, is because there's no duct work that has to be done with it. So, and they said it's easy to go in, you know, because they can sit all these outside units up, have them ready, and then they even talked about maybe, you know, in November, December, January, whenever, that they could come in, maybe work some nights and stuff too, where they can go in and run some lines, and then everything's back, ready to go for school the next morning, to where we're not having a big disruption there. But it's real easy to take one offline, or if you need to add, this system is very easy to add more units to. So that's kind of, I think that was a big selling point for us, was that, just how adaptable it was.
I think, you know, weighing on Josh and Mike, you know, their input out there, the fact that it takes the water lines out of the building, sealed system has those, and it goes through a refrigerant in there, it's, you know, kind of takes away the leaking aspect and things like that. And so they're pretty, just watching them guys through this process and talking about the different stuff, I think, you know, they're pretty excited about it. One of the things that we struggled with in that first meeting was, you know, the maintenance, because it is a new system and requires some stuff, so it was nice to see that there was a contractor in West, but whether we use him or not, there is people somewhat local that aren't coming out of Springfield, and I think there'd be some resources here, so that was a positive from that meeting that we went to, to see that we have some support in that area with that type of system, so it seems like a pretty good win for the school.
I was impressed with the contractor. I thought he was really, really good, and he said the same thing that they said in the first meeting that we had, is that the success of this system is like ninety-nine percent based on a good installation. You have to have a good install. You've got to get the right people involved, and they'll vet all the subs and make sure, they know about everybody out there who installs them, but they'll make sure we get a good installer.
It wasn't a sales pitch either. It was a straight-up, they...
No, he said, "I don't care who you hire. Just make sure you get somebody to know what they're doing."
They were telling the truth about the good and the bad.
Yeah, he said, "There's no shortcuts. You've got to do it the right way," you know, "but if you do it the right way, it's a good install, you'll be really happy with the system." And it's climate control, wherever, every room can be controlled individually, and we can set, you know, limits in there, but if one room needs to call for heat, you can do that. Another room needs to call for cooling, you can do that, you know, and so it's really easy to control, much more efficient.
What I liked about it too was those splits, like when they do a group of rooms, they're going to go vertically, so it'll only be a couple of rooms on each floor, rather than, so if a unit goes down, the other units in that hallway can kind of pick up the slack until they do get it fixed, rather than you've got a whole hallway with no heat or no air, so. Right now, if a unit goes down, we've got a whole building with no heat.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't they mention that because of the heat rising with them stacking on that, they were going to be able to draw some of the, you know, heat from upstairs? It would work better being stacked like that. I found it interesting.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting, because they'll create like, it sounds like five or six zones that'll be ran by each one of these external units, but the zones to me would have been, "Okay, take it part of the hallway," but they're not going to do that. They're going to take four of the four. So they'll take all these rooms that sit on top of each other, and that'll be one zone, and then another zone, simply because of that fact, because they can reuse some of that warm air to help develop all systems. I thought it'd be kind of interesting, but, no, it's still moving forward. They're still doing the work. Hopefully, as I said, we'll have something that we can report back to the entire board. Bring it back to the committee probably in August, maybe back to the entire board in September, and probably ask for some direction at that point in time. Plus, we'll have a better idea kind of where we are with the S or three money and how we can utilize that, so. But, yeah, this project would be an S or three project, so. All right, any questions? All right, thank you.
Safe return.
Yeah, yeah, safe return. Well, we're not really returning. We've always been there. We haven't gone anywhere, but I went ahead and put the title in there, because that's the title. Desi said, "You need to have on your plan," so we're doing a safe return, and I know the safe return primarily is because we still have schools, I think, in St. Louis, Cass City area that haven't been in school, and so for them, it truly is a safe return. I went through the plan. I went with, sat down with the administrators. We went through it page by page by page, and we really, let's say, downsized, but we eliminated things that we felt were no longer necessary, and we still have the basis for the plan. I put that plan in the packet. In a nutshell, what we did was we basically, we still have no mask mandate, but if they want to wear one, kids want to wear one, staff want to wear one, they can. It's not required, but it's totally up to you. we still have no mask mandate, but if they want to wear, if kids want to wear one, staff want to wear one, they can. It's not required, but it's totally up to you. Distance learning, a lot of that was taken out. We still have an AMI plan, but it's going to be very, very basic. And the state, DESI is getting rid of the AMIX option. The AMIX option was the option that you had if you had an extended school closure due to COVID. DESI is no longer doing that. So the only, the only option you have now is AMI. Now, you can use AMI, it's alternative method of instruction, primarily if you have a snow day, right? But for us, even using it for that would be really, really hard to mobilize, you know, like overnight. So we're not there yet. We did submit an AMI plan that basically says, you know, we can do some distance learning. We do have Chromebooks that can assist with that, if it's an extended thing. But if it's going to be just a one or two day deal, it's probably going to have to be packaged or something like that. And so we don't have a very rigorous AMI program, but we've left it in the plan because if by some happenstance we lose school because of COVID, then we need to have some plan in place about how we're going to continue the structure. But it's going to be very, very basic. We are allowing visits back into the building, but again, as always, they need to make sure they check in through the office before they go anywhere else and state the reason why they need to be there and so forth. And we probably went through, had the school nurses, they updated all the CDC guidelines. All the CDC guidelines that are in that plan right now are the most updated information that we have from CDC concerning lengths of quarantine and so forth. The fact that we do have tests available, if anybody wants to be tested, we still have those tests. They're going to be reauthorized through this fall. So. And then social distancing, we're still encouraging it, but we're not, we're not going to be monitoring as close as we did last year probably. So it's just a lower key version of the same plan. And essentially when DESI sent that out, and they basically said, the reason you have to do this is because we're not going to let you access your S or three money until you get this done. So they want to make sure every school district posts this on the district website. So this is one of the things we had to do. The next step is going to be laying out an application for the S or three money and put together a budget. And that's going to have to be done by August. Open the window in July, it has to be finished by August. So we'll have another meeting or two, probably a special meeting where we can sit down and iron out what, how we're going to spend that $3.2 million on the S or side. But in order to get to that point, we had to republish this to get it on, get it on the website. So that's why I brought it to you tonight. I'd like to have you approve it. That way it's blessed and then we can get it on, get it on the site and before from there. So are there any questions at all? I mean, you're really not going to see anything significantly different in August than you saw this past month. I mean, it's pretty much back to normal, as far as I'm concerned. So.
Just one small question. Why do we require clear water bottles? What's the purpose of that?
So that you are only carrying water.
I mean, is that, is that an issue? People bringing other stuff in at the beginning of school?
If we didn't, yeah, I'd have, half my eighth grader'd have coffee in there. So, yeah. We don't need them having, we just don't need them having sugary drinks and things like that, carrying around with them. And if they spill water, it's not sticky. If they spill some, it is.
And that's something else we're looking at doing is turning on, turning the water fountains back on. Yeah, and we'll still have the bottle filling machines.
Talking about turning the drinking fountains on as well?
Because they can have both the filler and the drinking at the same time. So if the kid doesn't want to carry a bottle, they can still get a drink. But some kids may prefer just to carry the water bottles, so they can still go out there and fill the water bottles. So it'll be dual function. So.
So we are going to do that?
Now, some things, some positive things that came out of this. I mean, we have automatic flushers in all our toilets now. Probably never would have been able to do that without COVID.
That should save us some money on the water.
It should, yeah, because it's not going to run forever, exactly. We've got the bottle filling stations, probably never would have done that without this, you know, and all that was done with carry money, you know. And so we were able to do some things ordinarily we never would have been able to do.
Did we ever get all of the disinfecting guns, whatever they're?
Yeah, we have like, we have, we have 10 of them now. What are they called? Well, what are they, what were they called? Remember?
Disinfecting guns.
No, there's a name, there's a name for them. I can't remember. They were all on backward and they all came in. So we have like 10 of them in the districts and they're still using them. So yeah.
I think it'd be a good practice just to stay away after that.
Keep the flu down. That's just smart, you know.
And, and if I don't, you know, our cafeteria, we're going back to regular foods or it was regular meals, you know. We're not, no more grab and go at the high school and no more grab and go breakfast, no more breakfast in the classroom at the elementary. Everybody's back in the cafeteria.
I thought you said we were keeping grabbing, yes.
Oh, the breakfast we are, but not the lunch. In the lunch, the high schools, in the classroom, they're going back to the very. So for the most part, it's going to be normal. So, I mean, right now, if you go see the kids eating lunch at summer school, they're pretty much packed in. Not a lot of social distancing going on. But, you know, it's just a word of the past now, it just seems like, you know, something we did, something we had to do and we got through it and everyone's doing better. So I think we're just, we're doing okay.
Any questions? Meal prices for next year?
Yes, I went ahead and put them in the agenda, but asked the board to go ahead and make a motion, approve a motion to set these. These are the same prices we've had. In the support services executive summer, I asked Regina Roberts to put a little smaller quarter in there about the seamless summer option. Under USDA, we will, we will still be able to continue feeding our students free. And we do receive the same reimbursement rate that we received under the extended summer free program. And so we're going to continue to make money on the food service program. Now, it does not include adults. So adults would still have to pay for their meal, but all of our students will eat free and we will receive a higher reimbursement rate for our students than what we're actually charging here. So.
So the only people we're going to charge, just.
It's going to be adults. That's right. Yeah, but unless something, if something changes midstream, then we need to have these in place so we can start charging again. But at this point in time, they're saying, you know, we can have it all year long. So, that's two years of kids eating free. That's pretty amazing. And the reason we qualify for this is because we're in an area of low income economically. So that allows us to qualify.
So nobody's got late school lunch charge calls this year off Friday?
No. No, we, we disconnected that service.
It may be hard to go back charging whenever.
But we still have a bill.
We do. We still have about $10,000.
The best leftovers from?
That's from two years ago. And, because I tell you, we've collected over $20,000 a year on these folks that hadn't paid their bills. And a lot of that is distributed to Regina. I mean, she's been working really hard to, to contact people and give them the opportunity to pay it, to make payments, whatever. And so we've got quite a bit. And then a lot of it too is like, when the kids graduate, then we get it that way too. But there's a couple and we're following the policy. If we get to the point where we just can't get it, then we do turn them into collections. And we've collected several through collections as well. So, but we're continuing to work on that. The good thing is their bill's not getting any higher. Because we're not charging. So the bill's stuck, it is staying there. So it's only going to go down. All right.
Budget.
Yeah, briefly, we're going to do most of this during the budget work session a couple of weeks ago. But I thought I'd just hit, hit the highlights here.
Not many highlights there, Bill.
They're here. Yeah, there, I found them. All right. All right, as we discussed at the school, at the special planning session a couple of weeks ago, I'll kind of go through the budget tab here. The few highlights that I want to bring out to you is the fact that we have an infusion of money coming with S or, S or two and S or three. We haven't received any S or two money yet. On that particular budget, we're getting 1.5 million out of that 1.5 million, about 1.4 is going to go toward either certified salaries, non-certified salaries or benefits. All right. And so in this particular budget, unlike our previous budgets, our classroom trust money is going to be deposited into Fund Four, not into Fund One. Because all that other money's coming into Fund One. And as we said, I'm not going to use the term that I said before, because it's really confusing and has a negative implication. So I'm basically saying they're going to send us their money and then we'll take our money and we're going to move it over to Fund Four. All right? So that's why we're putting all the classroom trust money into Fund Four. Which is, our limit, our max is like 433,000. It's the most that we can put in there. So the plan is to move all 433,000 classroom trust money into Fund Four. But we're going to be bringing in 1.4 million in S or money into one and two. So we're still going to be on the positive side, which will certainly help our unrestricted fund balance. Our mill levy, as you all know, is 2.75 at the minimum. Collection ratio's 92%, delinquency rate is at 8%. And so for the most part, Howe County pays their taxes and that surely helps us when it comes to cash flow coming in. These are assessed, are assessed valuations for Douglas County, Howe County, Texas County for real estate property that resides in each of those counties, not real estate, for school district property that resides in each of those counties. Prop C calculation, I'm estimating that to be 1,025, but a lot of that is based on DESI's calculated, Prop C's, the sales tax, statewide sales tax revenue and that is going back up. It really took a hit about a year ago when the economy went south because of COVID. And it's starting to bounce back now as things are starting to open back up and get to normal again. Our state adequacy target I'm setting is 6346, which is lower than what DESI's recommendation. I think DESI's recommendation is like 6425. I always want to be conservative because typically you don't get what DESI tells you they're going to give you. And so you'd rather estimate low. And if you get it, then great, it's great. So that's kind of how that works. Now, this is our maximum, my estimate of our maximum transfer that we can make from Fund One to Fund Four, which would take place at the end of next year. And so we can certainly move more money from Fund One to Fund Four. We're probably going to have it there because we've got all the S or money coming in. So we can make another large transfer. And this is not the same as classroom trust. Classroom trust isn't a transfer, we're just putting it straight into Fund Four. This would allow us to transfer money from Fund One at the end of the year into Fund Four if we have a balance that will allow us to do that, which will help prop up Fund Four again and allow us to do some capital projects that we, that we're going to talk about in a month or so. Our classroom trust, that's the gaming money. That's the casinos, the rural boat casinos and all the games, lottery and all the games that we have. I'm estimating that at $408 per ADA, per prior year ADA. Should generate about 468,000, but the most that we can put into Fund Four is 443, because it goes back to 2005, 2006. And after that date, they said, whatever your classroom trust was on that date, for every subsequent year, the amount that's over that has to go into the teachers' fund. And I think the reason for that is because I think back in 05, 06, some legislators were concerned, I'm sorry, 10, 11, 2010, 2011, I think some legislators were concerned, some superintendents were taking all that extra classroom trust and just putting it into Fund Four in projects and not necessarily putting it into salaries. And so they passed that law saying anything above that amount in the future has to go into the teachers' fund. And so we're allowed to put in about 443,000. Actually, it's going to end up being about 440,000 classroom trusts we put into Fund Four. And then we'll be able to make a transfer, a transportation transfer, I estimate about 161,000. So with all the S or money, it's really going to give us the ability to put more money into Fund Four, which will help us when we have capital projects down the road that we want to take care of. I'm estimating right now, and it's still, we still got, have the month of June to go. But I'm going to try to get us at the operating fund at 2.4 million, ending balance, June 30th balance, and try to get our capital fund up to 1.2 million going into next year. We have a number of different projects and I'll show those to you here in just a few minutes. So I'm estimating that we will have our unrestricted funds at 3.6 million going into next year. And then the rest of this, this is the line by line by line.
What percent is that, Bill?
That will be pretty close to 20. That'll be pretty close to 20. Two, two, four, two, three, two, four, two, five will be in the 20% range. So. Now, last year, we had to kind of contact Kenny Thomas a few weeks ago because we need to do an audit adjustment, because for whatever reason, when we made the transfer last year, it didn't go through to our ASBR. And I contacted Kenny and he kind of worked with us. He was able to, to get that, he said, we can still open back up and do the transfer. So we went back and did the transfer. So everything was looking good again, but for some reason it didn't upload into DESI's system. And so we were able to get that figured out. But I'm hoping that by the end of the year, end of the fiscal year, this is kind of where we need to be, where I'd like to be anyway. So if you go down, I mean, we can, don't really go line by line by line and that would be torturous. But I do want to take you down to the bottom so you can kind of see what the bottom line is of this particular budget. Okay, so basically we're looking at a total budget. Here's what we're looking at starting the year with. We have total revenues of 21, 22, about 13.7 million. Out of that amount, about 5.3 operations, 7.9 goes into the teachers' fund, 498,000 into capital. We're required to put 75% of formula money into the teachers' fund. That's a state requirement. And so it became kind of tricky because, you know, if we have to put 75% of state money in the teachers' fund, plus we have all this S or money, right, then it makes it more difficult to get 75% of the state money in. So I had to go in and make sure, and it's pretty close. I mean, it's pretty even, but we're still able to get our 75% of the state money in there. So we'll have total receipts. When you add up the receipts in the balances, about 17.3 million. Estimated expenses, about 13.4. And so this kind of tells you basically we're looking at, we should have about 3.9 left prior to transfers and that's all funds, all funds. Roughly then, if we get our transfers, I'm estimating that we would be right around 19. If you look at the 19.42%, that would be our unrestricted fund balance a year from now. If everything happens the way it's supposed to happen, with all the estimates. So it'll still be at 20%. It could very well be higher because of all the money that we're getting in. It just depends on how, how, how much we're going to move over to Fund Four. If we don't move out as much into Fund Four, then that number's going to go up. You know, and it really comes down to what the board's desires are in terms of capital projects and things that you want to accomplish. And again, this doesn't count any S or three, all right? That's, that's another 3.2 million. And out of that 3.2 million, we've got to spend about 670,000 on learning loss, right? So that's still going to leave about 200, 2.6 million that we can use for other projects, okay? And this budget doesn't reflect that. So as that money starts rolling in, then I'm going to more than likely have to come back to the board to do a budget amendment. Because none of that money, none of the S or three money is accounted for in this budget. But we're probably going to start getting, it's like if we do that project, we're starting, we're going to start getting it this year. Now, I don't think we have to do a budget amendment if it's just money in, money out. If we just do it and they build us and we get a reimbursement, comes back in, we're fine. But if we're going to put it into Fund Four and hang on to it, then we got to do a budget amendment because that's not accounted for here. All right? So I may be coming back to you just depending on what we decide to do with that, with that S or three money. Now, remember both the S or two and S or three, you have until October of '24 to spend it. All right? So you've got two years, you have two years, you know, two and a half years to figure out what you want to do and actually spend and get the projects done. All right? So you have time. I mean, but we still need plans so that you kind of know how you want to spend it in the next two and a half years and kind of plan out hours even though you're, you're going to do this project. The FEMA, the FEMA building is September, maybe we'll hear something. And that, if we find out that, if we get that expended, then I think we need to have a serious conversation about what to do with those S or $3 with respect to the FEMA building, because I think they're kind of connected. We can do some, some really good things. So. And then if you want to take a look at, just real quick, the capital plan, the main projects this year out of Fund Four are, we have a grant here. It's a 50/50 business enhancement grant. That's with the high school business department. Typically, we buy computers. So we've got 25,000, 12, 6 of that's paid for with the grant, 12, 6 of them we match. And that's a grant that we get every year. Some years we do business, other years we do fax, other years we do ag. Well, this year is the business department turn. And then the other major projects, I just have 10,000 transportation equipment. That's just the placeholder in case we need it. 255,000, those are the three buses that we are purchasing that will be in, in August, August probably. And so that's the, that's that cost. 35,000 is, that's the freezer that we're putting in at the middle school right now. And that one is kind of touch and go. They, Josh, Josh has been amazing. I mean, he got it torn out, him and Mike got it torn out. Tore out the concrete pad, put in another concrete pad, sealed up the hole in the wall. And now we're just waiting because then we've got word that it's probably not going to ship it to the last week in June. And that's going to make it tight for them to be able to get in, get it built and for Mike to get all the refrigeration stuff. To the point that Mike has already gotten quotes on freezers, on trailers, mobile freezers in case we need one for a period of time until we get this up and running. And they're very expensive. Most of them are out of the St. Louis area, but they're 600 bucks a week or something like that. And so it gets pretty expensive pretty quick. So we may have to develop a plan on how we're going to start the school year if we can't get that freezer done in time or if it doesn't get here in time, which is the biggest issue. These down here, we have our improvements. The 275,000, that is for the roof of Mumford Gym. That's going to come in right at 194,000 to do that roof. And we hope to get that done in July. It'll be done before school starts. And so that's what that number's for. 5,000 for architect fees, even though we haven't really used one. Total billing, now here's the lease purchases. This is your middle school principal payment. This is the energy loan that we had to replace all the lights to LEDs. That's the principal payment. And then here's the interest for those two. So when you add up those four principal and interest on those two leases, it's right at 345,000. So essentially, we are budgeting 943,570 out of capital plan. But out of that amount, you've got 255 for the buses, 200 for the roof and another 345 for the lease payments. So that comes out to about 800,000. So that's where most of the budget is for your. So that's where most of the budget is for your Fund Four, is on those major projects. And again, the classroom trust money will be going in there next year. And so we'll have another four hundred and forty-three thousand going into that during the year. And then, then we'll have another possibility for a large transfer at the end of next year. Any, any questions on, on that, on the budget itself? Make sure I've done everything. I talked about ESSR, ESSR two and three, classroom trust. Yeah, any, any other questions or comments or anything? So what, what I would ask you to do is to tentatively approve this budget preliminarily because by statute, the board needs to approve the budget in June. But I would bring this back once we have our, our final expenditures done, and our actuals, then we'll know exactly where we are. And so when I come back to you in July, then there's not going to be any more estimates because we know how we finished out the year, all right? And so then I can bring it back to you, then I ask you to take another motion at that time, and then we'll put together some budget book and see if we can get those two in August. Any, any questions at all? Covid was very interesting, but it's been a financial boom, so I'll just say, it's a, it's a lot of money. So we will have an opportunity to talk about that in the future unless you all are doing it, so.
Sounds fun.
Very good. Thank you.
Items for action, talked about the safe return to in-person instruction, we need a, I need a motion to approve it as, as presented.
Go ahead.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion in order to approve the meal prices for FY twenty as presented.
So moved.
On that, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sure you've heard that, Tim.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion would be in order to amend the twenty-one budget to actual spending.
Okay, does everyone understand what the purpose for that? We do it every year, but throughout the course of the year, we have different line items, some we overspend, some we underspend, well, this brings them all back to, to zero, to a hundred percent. And so we need to do that at the end of the year just to make sure the books work out, basically.
I make that motion.
By Dean? And a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Adam?
I think issue with that.
We'll talk about it later. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion in order to authorize a superintendent to make necessary transfer of funds. Does everybody understand what that's all about? Yeah?
Basically, this is where I'm estimating where Fund One and Fund Four is going to end up at. This allows me to get it there because we, we, we are able to transfer six hundred and twenty-one thousand maximum level on another hundred and sixty-one thousand in, in transportation over to Fund Four. Okay, we've already moved the classroom trust over, all right? Oh, no, we didn't move it over, we decided not to, not this year and next year regardless, but that's still giving over eight hundred thousand dollars, the flexibility to move that into Fund Four. Because right now, Fund Four is at seven hundred thousand, I want to try to get it up to one point two, so I may end up moving four or five hundred thousand over to get it there, right? And so it won't be the entire seven hundred thousand, it's just going to be however much I need to maintain those balances. So this would, the board would be giving me the direction of the authority to do that.
I make that motion.
Now, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, anything else for open session tonight?
Still need to approve the budget.
E.
Oh, we skipped one, didn't we?
Yeah.
Whoops. You really want that approved tonight?
Please do.
Please do. A motion in order to approve the preliminary budget for FY twenty-two.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Adam?
At least we can get named a.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'd receive a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Deveraux call?
Aye.
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 And aye. Very good.
You boys did good.
Rolling on. Personal.